Good evening. Welcome to the regular meeting of July 24th. Please rise. Our council vice president Laura Toye will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you very much, Madam Vice President. Welcome to the 1,973rd regular meeting of the Livonia City Council. This will be a voting meeting. The minutes of this meeting will be approved on Wednesday, August 9th of 2023. Ms. Nash, please take the roll.
Vice President Toye?
Here.
Councilmember Barr?
Here.
Councilmember Donavick?
Here.
Councilmember Morgan?
Here.
Councilmember McCullough?
Here.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Here.
President Jolly?
Present. We have all of our friends and colleagues here tonight. At this time, I would entertain a motion in regards to the meeting minutes of July 10th of 2023.
Move approval, support.
I have a motion to approve from Barr with support from Donavick. Are there any additions or comments to the minutes from the council?
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Toye.
At our last meeting, we had a large discussion about different things that were happening within the Treasurers Department and the Assessors Department and the city. And, Mr. Burnier, if I may, Mr. Chair to Mr. Burnier, if we approve these minutes, are we approving this as well?
No.
I thought I remember you saying that. I want to make sure.
The mayor filed a veto. So as of now, the resolution is vetoed. The burden's on, if council wants to override the veto, five members of council have to vote in the affirmative to override the veto. So it is vetoed as of now.
Gotcha.
And all the minutes reflect is what happened at the last meeting.
Okay.
Which it was, in fact, approved at the last meeting.
Okay. I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
If there's nothing else from the council?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Barr?
I have a question. What's, is, through the chair to Mr. Burnier, what are the, what are the rules as far as considering an override of that veto? Does that have to happen now, or can that happen at any point in the meeting?
No, that could happen anytime. It has to happen in this meeting.
Got it. Okay.
But other than that, it's up to, council sets its own rules. You could do it whatever time the council deems appropriate.
Okay. Thank you.
I believe when we've done this before in the past, for organizational purposes, under the charter, the clerk is going to read the veto for a public record. My preference would be to act on it at that time to keep it all together. If there's nothing else from the council, is there any comments or additions on the minutes from the audience? Good evenings. Yes or no?
I'm waiting for audience communication.
Okay. It's, thank you, sir. If I don't see anything else from the audience in terms of the minutes, Ms. Nash, will you please take the vote on the minutes of July 10th?
Vice President Toye?
Aye.
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavick?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
Vice President Toye?
I already said it.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. President Jolly? I already did.
Do you want me to vote again?
I'll vote in the affirmative. The minutes are approved. At this time, the council set aside 30 minutes for audience communication to address the council on any items that are not on the agenda tonight. Council, or, the audience will be limited to three minutes on those topics. Ms. McIntyre is our parliamentarian, and she's got this big red clock over here. She's going to try, keep track so long as the technology agrees. So we'll get that started. Good evening. Your name and address, please.
Thank you. Christopher Martin and the great state of Michigan. I noticed this recently, and this just had occurred, that when you watch the city council meetings on YouTube, that they're now running commercials. They never did that before. So as a city channel, I know it's public access, but do we, did we approve that? Are, are these meetings actually copyrighted in some form and they can't use that? Because this has just started. So as some of you are talking during the meeting, all of a sudden now, it goes to some advertisement for something, and then it comes back to the meeting. So I don't know if you're, many of you are aware of that. That just started, though. It had never been like that prior. So is there something that we can put a disclaimer at the end of these meetings where we own this, and the city does, and you cannot broadcast this by changing things? It has to be in its entirety, no commercials, no nothing. So it might be something for Paul to maybe have an idea on that, but I would like to have that stopped. I don't know if the city's making any revenue off that. I don't know if that's a money-making adventure or not, but that just started. So bring that to your attention, if we can stop that in some manner.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. I appreciate that, and thanks for bringing that to our attention. Law Department, if you can make note of what's been said and see if I, I don't believe we can copyright public hearings and public meetings, but...
Especially since the legislature has approved that anybody can videotape a public meeting. I think it would be difficult, but I will look into it.
Thank you, sir. Is there any other audience communication tonight? Going once, going twice? Audience communication for this evening is closed. At this time, I will welcome any announcements or reports from the mayor or other city officials. I believe you have something, Ms. Nash.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. For the Livonia Charter, Chapter 4, Section 24, veto. The mayor filed with the clerk's office today, July 24th, 2023, a veto for council resolution 355-22. The charter requires the mayor to state her reasons for said veto, which she does in the letter, and for the clerk to present to the council at the regular meeting, which I am doing now. All members of council were sent a copy of the letter via email, and I have physical copies on hand. If anyone wishes one, if you have any further questions, city attorney Paul Burnier is here with me.
Thank you, Ms. Nash.
Is there a hard copy of the veto to be able to have it there?
If there's nothing else at this time, Mr. Barr?
Mr. Chair, I would like to offer a motion for veto override.
Support.
Mr. Barr has made a motion to override the mayor's veto with support from Ms. McIntyre. Is there any comments from the council?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Barr?
So just to recap this, and I'll try to keep this simple. It's not, it's not complex, but what this was about is it was brought to our attention at the last meeting, that at our December 5th meeting, when we approved the three, I think it was a three-year agreement, doesn't matter how long it was, when we approved the agreement for the software provider, that is, the backup system for where residents and businesses can go today, and has, they always have been able to, to go look up free of charge what their property tax bills are, and any property tax bill in the city of Livonia for that matter. This has always been free. When we approved it in December, the letter that was written to council submitted by Treasurer Linda Schele, signed by the mayor, signed by the finance director, specifically said that this would be offered free of charge. Council, as you know, as President Jolly correctly said last time, we speak through resolutions, but admittedly, the legalese of the resolutions, I'm sure I'm not the only one that doesn't necessarily read those word for word every time, we assume that those resolutions reflect what's given in the letters to us. But as it turns out, we found out at the last meeting that the resolution that we passed did not match what had been given to us, and there was no stipulation in there that this would be free of charge. That wouldn't necessarily have been an issue. In fact, it's my understanding that it hasn't said even in the past, when we've done these things, that it's free of charge. But the point is, that's what we all thought we were doing, and that's the way the city's always done it. The facts I'm now going to share, I've actually learned since the last meeting, because we heard, what we heard in the last meeting was presented to us in that meeting for the first time. But it turns out that in, in April, the administration seemingly looking to add fees to the service to residents that has not had fees in the past, asked the law department with, for a recommendation as to whether council approval would be needed for them to do this. Well, correctly, based on the resolution that was passed, said that they did not. In June, a memo was sent out within City Hall to a number of department heads and city officials. City council was not included on that email, on that memo, and laying out a plan to add these user fees on August 1st. The first time council heard about this was when Treasurer Schele got up at the podium at the last meeting to inform us that this was happening. And so hearing that, I offered the resolution. It was unanimously passed by this council after extensive discussion, that we simply amend the resolution from December in order to match the intent that we all had. I want to emphasize that this is not, this was not, as the maker of the motion, my purpose in offering that motion had nothing to do with whether I think this user fee structure is a good idea. I'm not weighing in on that at this point. I, I actually think there's a case that could be made for both sides. The point is, when we are looking to charge residents money, whether that's through taxes, whether that's through fees, this body, which is, the intent of this body as a legislative body is to be the people's representatives when it comes to matters of money, when it comes to the budget, and when it comes to what they are charged, this council needs to be involved. And to have our administration seemingly deliberately trying to go around council to get something done for something that, while maybe was legally permissible, but certainly wasn't the intent, I don't think is in the best interest of the city, and I don't think is what any of our residents, or frankly, as shown by the unanimous vote last time with this council, intends. The mayor, the mayor has vetoed that, and in the information that we've learned since then, because this memo that was not shared with council has since been shared with council by other sources, that August 1st is when the administration was, and as far as I know still is, intending to institute these user fees that have never been charged before. Now, the consequences of failing to override this veto, if we do not override this, the mayor has unilateral authority to raise these fees however much she wants, the mayor, or a department head, however much they want, whenever they want. We've seen a memo that says what they intend to do on August 1st. There's nothing to keep it to that memo. There's nothing to keep it to that amount. There's nothing to keep it to that timing. Council's out of the picture. I will also note that while I don't know the letter of our ordinances as to where council is legally required to approve fees or not, that's probably something worthy of additional study, but I know in my time on council, there are many fees, including quite small fee changes, that we have approved from the city clerk's office, that we've approved, approved from Parks and Recreation. Those are the only ones I can say off the top of my head, and we're talking about packets of individual fees that sometimes are very nominal amounts, and yet council is asked to approve those. And I think it is entirely appropriate, again, that anytime we are looking to raise revenue from our residents in any form, it's worthy of discussion, but council needs to be at the table to do that. So I'll just, before I wrap up here, because since I've put some of these thoughts together, we have gotten the mayor's veto letter. We got it about quarter till 5:00 today, and I'm just going to quote from that letter, because to be honest, that, that letter provides as good of a framework as any for what I wanted to say tonight. Quoting from the letter from the mayor, "I'm vetoing this resolution because this was, this was only raised during the public comment section of council's regular meeting without any advance notice to council members or the administration for their input and recommendation." I want to make something very clear about what happened here. The only reason council knows about this is because Treasurer Schele had the foresight to come before us and let us know about it because she thought we ought to. Had she not done that, the failure for advance notice was on the part of the administration. We have, we have memos from April and from June showing that this, indicating that this was the intent. Had Treasurer Schele never brought this to our attention, we would not know about it. Number two, another quote from that letter, "Council decided this issue based on incomplete and inaccurate information." Again, this is not about the merits of the specific plan. This is about whether council should be involved with these types of decisions. Nothing has changed from that meeting, and when it comes to that point, there was nothing incomplete, and there was nothing inaccurate from what was presented to us. And finally, another quote from that letter from the mayor, "The amendment is not fiscally responsible because it does not allow us to reduce the overall cost of the city of Livonia." Now, without trying to make this a business 101 class, there's a big difference between a cost and a price. The cost of this service is the cost of the service. That cost is there. Whether these fees are levied on residents or businesses or not has nothing to do with the cost of that service. The question is, where does that cost get covered? And that cost is already covered by our taxpayer dollars. What the administration appears to be wanting to do with this is to raise, is to put an additional price on it, on residents and on businesses, in order to cover that cost, which is going to exist regardless of what we do here. So for all those reasons, I think it is incredibly important that this council overrides this veto. Again, I am very open, very open to the discussion of the merits of, of user fees and where, where those might not, might apply on this, but council needs to be part of that discussion. And council was correct two weeks ago to pick that up from the limited information we have and to unanimously approve this, and I think council would be wise to override the veto now. Thanks.
Ms. Toye?
Thank you. Jeez, where do you begin? The last meeting, I've sat on this council three different times, three times eight as whatever it is. I went to Bentley, and let's see. But anyhow, I've been on here a while, and I have never in my career, on city council, that is, had an important issue like this come before us without it being on an agenda. So there wasn't proper notice given to the council as well, if you want to get technical, okay? And normally, the petitioner or the person bringing it forward would request that to be put on an agenda so that both sides could look at the issue for what it is. My problem is on this is the process. The process was not followed. The transparency was not there. We didn't hear from both sides. I've done a lot of research on this, both because I was a treasurer, and I did work with Linda Goslin and others in that department. So I called to ask what was going on, because now I'm here and these users and everything else, and, and that's not necessarily what was discussed back in November, from what I understand. Evidently, there's paperwork, there's a PowerPoint, and I think it behooves this council to be able to see those documents and that, what was going on. I don't want to micromanage a city. If I wanted to do that, I would have ran for mayor, but I didn't. Or, I mean, really? I don't want to micromanage, but I want to be told what is going on, rather than at a public hearing, which opens the floodgates for anybody to get up, whether it's a department head, a resident, or whatever, during audience communication, and to take a vote, and for somebody to make a motion immediately after that treasurer had spoken was a little suspicious to me. I'll be quite frank with you. And I don't like that. I, it's bad governance. And so if we're going to really argue this point and get into it, then let's see from the other side or hear from them. I see Ms. Goslin in the audience tonight. I see our mayor, mayor in the audience tonight. So, you know, I mean, we're in a voting meeting right now, but we wouldn't be in this if we had had proper notice of this. I don't know if anyone else that has ever gotten on our agenda under audience communication. I thought we were just given notice on tax bills and user fees, okay? And it, it hasn't always come to the council. Always is, is a, is a large word. So I see what the mayor had written in her veto. This goes back to 2010, council, if you've read this. I had to ask for a copy because I can't read it off my phone. I'm getting old. And so consequently, you know, authorizing BSNA, who's done business in the city for a whole long time, you know, and there's a lot of if comes on this, and I think that others were aware of that and didn't share that information. And I don't think there's a cost to the residents from what I'm understanding, nor the businesses. So let's get the story straight. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. Ms. McIntyre?
I'm confused by a number of the things that Ms. Toye just said, but I'm not going to try to unravel those right now. I will say that talking about process, council had a resolution that included language that this was going to be done with no change to the fee structure, meaning no fees. And instead of coming to council to have a discussion, and when it, remember, when it comes to councils, as my colleague, Mr. Barr, pointed out, when it comes to council to talk about fees, it's not coming to, coming to council is not the important part. It, it becomes part of, of the public discourse, and the public has an opportunity to ask questions and weigh in. So we, we were moving ahead with the assumption that the resolution that we had supported or that we had seen with the language for no fees was what was going to be the order of the day, and then we learned through, through Linda Schele, and she came to audience communication because we had not been informed of this by anyone in the administration, that, that there was a change to this. That is a regular process. And then we found out through the course of Mr. Burnier helping to clarify for us, that the mayor had gone to Mr. Burnier, and I'm reiterating some of the points Mr. Barr made, to see if these fees could be changed without coming to council. So this whole process is unusual, and, and I will agree with Ms. Toye that perhaps the way this came to us was unusual, but, but everything behind this was unusual. Also, we had this meeting on July 10th. We received this veto, that was two, two weeks ago tonight. We received this veto letter around 5:00 o'clock today. So if, if we want to discuss that the council is not, that we don't hear from both sides, we get a veto letter two weeks to the day after the meeting, two hours before the meeting. I would be more than happy to have had all the facts brought to us, and Mr. Barr made that point very well, too. We would have been very happy to have entertained the discussion, understood what fees were being imposed and who they were going to be imposed on. I mean, my first blush is, these are fees and taxes on taxes. Maybe that's not the case, but we had no opportunity to hear what the case was. So given how we ended up here, given that council believed at every reason to believe and understand that this was going to move forward with no fees, I am in complete support of a veto override. Thank you.
Is there anything else from the council? I see nothing from the council. Is there anything from the audience or the administration? Good evening. Your name and position, please.
Linda Goslin, city assessor.
Thank you.
Good evening, President Jolly and council members. I didn't have the opportunity to present to you the in-depth presentation of the BSNA pay-per-hit model for you to make an informed decision on this matter, so I'd like to give you some simple and concise reasons as to why this would be a benefit for our city. All homeowners, taxpayers, and business owners will be able to access their own property information free of charge. Homeowners and business taxpayers do not need to set up an account to pay their own tax bill. It will remain as it is currently. The BSNA contract for the city of Livonia is $56,292. Of that amount, $34,439 will remain, as this is each department's support and service. The residual will be a net savings of $23,579 annually. This model comes with an enhancement for residents and business owners to access for free a sales search of all properties that have sold within our community. This is a $10,500 enhancement that we don't currently provide. The fee to access a property other than your own will be $3. This fee will be paid primarily by real estate agents, mortgage companies, title companies, and appraisers. BSNA collects the money and distributes 20% of the revenue back to the city quarterly. For the convenience of our homeowners and taxpayers, we will provide the ability to access all Livonia parcels free of charge at open access computers that can be found in the Bennett Library, Sandberg Library, and the City Hall. I would ask the council to take into consideration the information my department has collected and uphold the veto. Thank you.
Is there anybody else from the audience? Okay. Did Mr. Barr, or excuse me, Mr. Donavick, did you have a question for Ms. Goslin?
It was going to be more of a statement since she just spoke.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mrs. Gosling, for speaking. I've done a little bit of research on this topic. It's been a rather quick topic. It's come before council pretty quickly, all the information, trying to go back and forth with what's going on. I want to thank the assessor's office. I want to thank the treasurer's office. I want to thank the different department heads that have been involved. So I'm not going to support overriding the veto. Well, I will support, excuse me, overriding the veto, but my, my notion isn't so much the veto itself or the, the topic itself. I think there's a case for user fees. I understand implementing user fees on non-taxpayers or non-residents, non-property owners. We just heard the city assessor talk. She went in depth with some of the things she's discussing, and I know there's a lot of discussion to be had. That's why I believe it was so incumbent for this council to understand what this entire contract is about. You talk about BSNA, I personally use it outside of council for my day job. I think the, the argument is there, whether user fees should be implemented and not subsidized by taxpayers, by people that own the property, but council should have been a part of that discussion. When I voted on this back in December, I understood it to be free to all. I clearly understand that there's an argument here to charge people that don't own properties in Livonia. If you own a property, from the, from the research I've done, from speaking to different people in City Hall, if you own a property in the city, whether it be one property or 10 properties, then you would have free access to BSNA for your property, and I think that's understandable. But we talk about non-property owners, I can understand there should be a discussion about that. Should we, should we charge non-property owners, whether it be a dollar, $3, under those different varying fees? So I understand that. I just think that council should have been in the loop of this whole discussion. I didn't hear about this entire conversation until the last meeting, and I did not like voting for something at a meeting, and I will say that for the record, I did not appreciate that. I did not like that, but I understand there's other things going on at City Hall. That's why it's so important that council, the legislative body of the city, to be a part of the discussions. We're in mending contracts when we're adding fees to residents or non-residents. We are the city council. People ask us questions. I'm not here to micromanage the administration. I'm not the mayor, and I fully support the department heads and the mayor doing their due diligence on certain topics and, and looking at how we can minimize the cost to our residents. I'm okay with that. I like that. From my perspective, department heads were creatively thinking how we can minimize costs to residents and, and still provide a good product, but council doesn't find out about that until the last second. And when I voted on this, I understood that we were voting for free for all. So I think council should have been a part of the conversation. That's why we're here today. We shouldn't be here in this situation right now. We should be having a discussion about this at a committee meeting or at another meeting to talk about how we could have changed this platform, but I just don't think that the administration or exactly, City Hall in general, should have changed this without including council on the discussion. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. I think, Ms. McIntyre, did you have a?
I think Mr. Barr was. I, I did have a.
I'll call on people when I notice them.
No, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Thank you.
I just want to give you the opportunity.
Yeah, I did have a question for Ms. Goslin. I appreciated the, the president, what, what you shared tonight, Linda. You said you didn't have an opportunity to make the PowerPoint presentation to us. Why is that, or why couldn't it have been sent to us in an email? And then the numbers you just went through, which I appreciate hearing, I don't think we've ever received a copy of that information.
Well, when I started this two years ago, working on this as my goals and objectives, I expected that I would have some answers and had a, had a formal meeting with the appropriate department heads. So when we started to review this, it ended up being a line item budget reduction. So we're taking away $23,000 out of the budget, so I was reducing the budget, because we're, we have a $56,000 bill, and we have to continue getting our service, so in my mind, it was a reduction out of our budget. I then referred to the mayor for her thoughts and Paul Burnier, and it was noted that this does not have to come before council. So there was no intent to underhand or re, you know, recirculate this information that it didn't get to you. It just was the way that the process took place. And then, and it really is, that, that budget is both of ours, okay? The contract, it's, it's both assessing and treasury. So that monies of the $23,000 is shared by both of us. So it's not, one doesn't have more of the contract than the other. That's just what it is for the two departments to have the service. So we, by, by doing this, we would be reducing that monies because we were going to this pay-per-hit model, which is what I explained.
You, you still have the floor.
Thank you very much. I still don't understand why we couldn't have received a copy of the presentation or the numbers that you just shared with us, and this goes back to the entire point of why this information could not have been shared with us. And, you know, again, understanding that the, that the, that the city attorney was asked, and I understand and really appreciate what you're trying to do with your budget, right? And Scott made an excellent point that, that we're not, the cost is incurred, right? As part of your budget, what you're looking to do is offset that additional cost, and certainly we appreciate the intent to work within the budget, reduce the budget, recoup costs where we can from non-residents. That's all, everyone, I'll speak for myself, I certainly have no issue with that. It is the way that it was done after council had approved one thing. And then all these things happened in the background. And again, the mayor went to the city attorney and asked him to say, yeah, you can impose these fees without coming to council. But why was that? And this question doesn't go to you. Why, why does that happen? Why are we seeking to put, and again, this is completely supportive of your attempt to work within the budget and recoup expenses? But, and the numbers you just gave us, I'd really like to have a copy of those. And I think this goes back to the point that there wouldn't necessarily have been any opposition here to doing this. And again, thank you for the work that you do, and thank you for your, you know, looking to shift costs, right, from our taxpayers to maybe external users from our taxpayers. Thank you.
I'll give Mr. McCullough a chance to speak. He hasn't spoken on this yet.
Thank you, Council President. Ms. Goslin, I'm good with you. I'm just having a statement, but thank you. I think that the communication, I support, I will not be supporting a veto override. I will, however, say in the last 48 hours, I've learned a lot about this topic. And the communication, I know some of my colleagues brought up another couple of emails that went through. I haven't seen any of them, I'll be honest. And I think that lies the problem. It seems like there's silo effects all spread around the city, and I think we need to get better at that. Having the information in front of us now, give it a good example. August 1st, we start hearing from business owners. Who do you think they're going to call? They're going to call council, they're going to call administration, say, hey, what's this fee service? And I think having that ability to be able to respond is key. You know, we're all on the same team. I just think we need to communicate a lot better. And that goes from council to administration, administration to council. What's laid out in front of us with the information that was provided in the last 48 hours is good. I mean, it's something that makes sense. But having that information is key. That gives us the decision. So that, those are my notes on it. I'm not going to support an override. But going forward, I hope that we can get some more communication to council so we can be more transparent and be along with decisions. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Barr?
So first of all, Mr. McCullough said he wasn't privy to those emails. The first email was sent on July 11th to all of council. I'm looking at it right now. Mr. McCullough was on that email. That was one of the documents I referred to. The second email to which I'm referring was sent on Tuesday, July 18th, to all of council by Paul Bernier. He was also on that email. So this was made available in the last two weeks to all of council. Just a quick personal example of how this affects things, and I know I'm probably a little abnormal in this, but I'm a numbers guy, and I didn't have to be on council to be that. And I'll tell you, over the years, both on council and before council, I have made use of this service many, many times when researching various tax proposals, whether it be Schoolcraft, whether it be Wayne Risa, whether it be something related to the city, and have used other homes in the cities as proxies to try to understand what the tax impact would be on various levels of homeowners in the city to help me make informed decisions. Well, that might not be the level of detail everybody goes to. I'm sure I'm not the only one. What Ms. Goslin told us, and appreciate having those facts, and those were consistent with the documents that have been emailed to all of us in the last two weeks after this came up. But it's free if you go and access it at a library. But if you do what I was wanting to do, I'm getting, I'm paying three bucks, as she said, pay per click. Three bucks for every single record that I look up as a city resident, if I want to do it in the comfort of my own home. That, again, that's just, we could have a larger discussion about the merits of this, but that's one perspective to say, this isn't free to residents. And, you know, the comment was made, don't want to micromanage the administration. I appreciate the intent of that, and I don't want to micromanage the administration either, except when it comes to raising fees or raising taxes on residents. I'll never make an apology for making it more difficult for governments to raise revenue. I'm not saying it shouldn't happen. We need revenue. Any government does. But it should be hard. I also just want to point out again that the only reason we're having this discussion tonight is because Treasurer Shield brought it to our attention. Otherwise, council would have never known. And I'm listening to Mr. McCullough say that, yeah, I'm not going to vote to override this, but I think council should be at the table. You know, we've heard, we've heard Councilwoman Toy lecture council a number of times over the last couple of years about how we need to stand up to this administration sometimes. I mean, this is one of those times. And, you know, Ms. Toy in the last meeting said, you know, in a response to a question from Ms. Shield, you know, where Ms. Shield said that, yeah, there's a good chance that if you don't do this, that residents will be charged, Ms. Toy said, I for one wouldn't vote for that. And, you know, I'll just also, I'll just finish up with this. President Jolly said last time, because I made note of this as I was prepping for this meeting, and this is a direct quote, "This is a service that is paid for by tax dollars. We currently live in the information age. This is public information. Should never be charged to see public information that is readily available and has been for at least 10 years, possibly longer. There's no question that shouldn't be associated with a fee." Again, we could debate all those merits, but this council unanimously approved this for a reason a few weeks ago. Council has to be at the table for these kind of things. It's important that we stick up for what our role is because we represent the taxpayers on these types of discussions.
Mr. Morgan?
Yes, I'd just like to reiterate a little bit of what was talked about tonight. And, you know, I mean, when I originally voted for this BSA contract, I feel like I was kind of backdoored on this situation. My understanding was, it was clear that no taxpayers would be charged, and that's what we voted on. And now this was kind of turned around and backdoored by the administration and trying to bring in fees for the residents. And it's something that should have been brought to us. It wasn't. It's just not something that I can vote for in this case. And I don't, I don't understand why they just couldn't have brought it in front of us, and we probably could have worked something out as long as the citizens weren't charged. So, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan. Ms. Toy?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I still have problems with the process. This council is going to allow people to get up during audience communication now. It opens the floodgates so that they can question or ask for a vote, and then other members will not, will say, I'm going to stick by my motion that I made, and weren't open to the fact that we could have a discussion and/or put it into a committee where we didn't have to air, you know, some of these kinds of things that all of us are bringing up. What I heard clearly is our lawyer, Mr. Bernier, who's also the council's attorney, did explain, and correct me if I'm wrong, Paul, or Mr. Bernier, that it didn't need to come to council. And I think, if I heard it correctly, that's probably why they didn't bring it to council, because it wasn't needed to bring to council. Other departments use BSNA as well in this, in this city, if I'm not mistaken, and if you guys still do it, and I'm pretty sure you do. And, for example, the inspection department, they use it. They raise fees on things that you and I don't know about, okay? And that's no offense to Jerome. He does a wonderful job, and they do excellent work in this city. But when I talked about micromanaging, there's just some things that, you know, maybe we should be copied on here and there, but, you know, day-to-day, you got to have confidence in these department heads and this mayor to bring forward the kinds of issues that are important. That's why we have minimums on what they bring before us. If we had to check and balance everything that goes on day-to-day, trust me, I worked in that crazy treasurer's office, and if I had to bring stuff forward to the council every single minute, you know, I wouldn't get work done in there, neither would any of my staff. So I don't want to insult anybody on this. That's not, I don't think that's the notion that we're trying to do, but just know that there's other fees, and they went on advisement of the attorney for this city. And these other department heads, I hope the word goes out, I will never, I will stop the president and say, Mr. President, or whoever's up at that microphone, and say, this is out of order. This is totally out of order to call for a vote on this at this time. That's why we have Robert's Rules of Order. That's why we have procedures. That's why we have laws that govern us, so that it's transparent to the resident. You talk about not being transparent to the resident with fees, this was not transparent to the resident. This was somebody that didn't get their way within City Hall and came forward to this council and had four votes and moved it. I know what it was about, and so do you. So the reason I voted for it is because I thought it was clear, and I thought I was getting fair treatment from this. And when I found out I didn't, yep, it ticked me off, and it still ticks me off, that somebody in this City Hall would do that to this city council. We are elected officials. We take an oath of office. I take that very seriously. We don't go on personalities. Thank you.
If there's nothing else from the council, because this is a motion, we will open up this.
Chair.
Yes.
I didn't want to say anything else, but I can't let that stand. The comments Councilwoman Toy just made actually made my case for me. I could take her last couple of sentences. It's exactly my point, that nobody should be trying to bring this before, trying to, I don't know what her exact words were, but nobody should be trying to blindside in council with this.
That's right.
That's exactly what this is about, because we had administration that was trying to avoid going to council, and it was because of another public servant that stood up and brought this to attention. And I wanted to remind Ms. Toy, who's been on this council many, many more years than I have, is much more familiar with Robert's Rules of Order than I have. It is far from unprecedented for a motion to come as a result of audience communication. Robert's Rules of Order, it is entirely appropriate, and it happens all the time on this council, that something comes up in a meeting, and a council person will offer to make a motion, and if it has second, then we can debate it. Now, many times, it's for things to go to committee, but it is not at all unprecedented to vote for something that's binding as a result of something that comes up in that meeting. In this case, it had to be done in that meeting because, as we now know, didn't know at that time, but indeed, this was slated, apparently, based on the emails we received, to go in place on August 1st. And we did not have the time procedurally to stop it if we didn't do something in that last meeting. And I got that just from what we heard in the last meeting. It wasn't anything that was baked ahead of time. I mean, and to say that you don't know of anyone who's put something through a vote, through audience communication, and that we have to make a motion to discuss, well, to your first comment, that's happened frequently. Second of all, that's exactly what happened. So I just, like I said, I'm not trying to, I didn't intend for this to turn into this, but I can't let that stand what was just said. Thank you.
Okay. Counsel, I know there's some people who want to speak here. I want to caution us about going back and forth in regards to this, and if we can possibly, I'm not going to not call on people, but if we can keep it to the substantive matter, that would be appreciated. Ms. McIntyre?
The comment that, about micromanaging and that council doesn't approve every fee, 100%, there are a lot of fees that we, that we do, that we do consider and come to us, and I think it's by charter, I buy ordinance. What was unprecedented for me, and again, I don't have all of Ms. Toy's years on council, I don't recall any time in my almost eight years on council that we passed a resolution, and it was very explicit that there would be no fee, or no change in fee, or no new fee. And then behind our backs, and behind the public's backs, there was an attempt to impose the fees. That's what I never recall happening. Thank you.
Mr. McCullough?
Thank you, Council President. Going back to Mr. Barr's comments about emails and transparency, and I, you know, this appears somewhat speculation, but the last meeting, we had our treasurer come up during audience comment. I can for one tell you my honest opinion, that was the first time that I heard anything about BSNA, anytime. It was the first moment I heard it, and I had to make a gut decision. And if all of you and some of us, and I'm not pointing fingers, but going up to that, if you knew that that was coming up before us for audience comment, you know, if you were blindsided like I was, then I agree with you. But I can tell you for a fact that there was probably some people in the know that that was going to happen that evening. And again, it goes back to the transparency on all fronts. We could sit here and bicker. At the end of the day, it's our duty to the residents to work together and to fix these things. It's ridiculous. And so after that, everybody has a little blame on their face on this one. We got to get better. So for that, you know, I'm going to, I guess, request as much as we can to push this to a vote. Thank you.
Mr. Morgan, and then I would really like to go to the audience.
Yeah, I'd just like to rebuttal on that. You know, I, the reason I made that motion during that meeting is, and I had no idea that was coming up, but I will say that I do remember voting when that BSNA contract came up, and it was clearly indicated that the residents would not have to pay. And we discussed it. It was clear exactly what they were asking for at that time. And then we were informed that there was an error made, or some type of language error made, and we needed to take action to correct it. So that's why that motion was made, and I moved forward with that because that is what we originally voted on. And now this is being, we're being backdoored on this when we already told the citizens that we weren't going to charge them, and the administration is trying to make, do something that we already told them that we weren't going to do. So, thank you.
Could I say just one thing?
Yes, sir.
I just want to point out, I'm in an unusual situation. I represent council, administration, and the administration of this matter. The only clarification I want to make is that since 2010, the wording of the resolution has been identical. The only thing that has changed are the amounts and the dates on it, and it has never had in the resolution said that it would be free to anybody. And as did the one the council voted on. And when it came to me, the question was asked, is does that preclude the administration from instituting fees? And my opinion was, because you speak through your resolutions, it does not. I'm not speaking about wisdom or anything else. That's beyond my pay grade. But the fact of the matter is, it didn't require, in my opinion, council approval, and if something wasn't taken out on that. I also want to point out that often, that what we, as the law department, before resolutions are submitted to council, are sent to the department heads to review, for department heads to say, this is wrong, or this is right, because we can't possibly get everything correct in the resolutions. And so we send it to the department heads for them to be the final review of the resolutions. I just wanted to make sure that that was clear.
Thank you, Paul. I'm going to hand the gavel over to Ms. Toy and ask her for the floor.
Over to her.
So to follow up, and it's a good introduction there by our faithful attorney here, we, as we go to study meetings, there will be a study meeting that starts tonight at some point at, who knows now what time it might start, but it'll start. And at that time, we usually have a packet of information in regards to the items that are before us that night. It is not unprecedented for that to be six, seven, even 800 pages sometimes. In that packet of information, there are letters from petitioners, there are site plans, there are reports, there are recommendations. There's an abundance of information. When we have a regular meeting, and we have items that have gone from the study to the regular, or they have been previously put on the regular directly, we have resolutions prepared that say resolved, and then indicate the language exactly indicating what we will be voting on. That is how council speaks. That is how we get our message across majority votes up here through the resolution. I don't want to continue going back and forth here. When we were presented this item initially, two weeks ago, there was an indication that was presented that there was a mistake with the resolution. We have had mistakes with resolutions before. The mistakes have been incorrect dollar amounts, incorrect dates. To be honest with you, having voted on that that night, there was no mistake when we initially voted on this resolution. And there's where the problem is. That night when this was brought to our attention, probably in good faith, right? I'll say in good faith. We did not have the language of the resolution in front of us. We had somebody telling us what the resolution said. We had somebody telling us why this was a problem. In the last two weeks, we have had chances to have meetings to discuss with each other, to understand what the assessor's office was trying to do here, to understand how this would be an additional benefit to the city. And all of that is very important information. And at this point, you know, we're going to vote in a couple of minutes, and we'll see how everything lays out. During my entire time on council, which is not Ms. Toy's, and it's succeeded by other people here as well, this continued question of communication between us, between our office, between the mayor's office, it continues to be the item that dogs us as a city. And that goes without question. It has been the item that we have discussed time and time again, all of us, each and every one of us have discussed communication. We all want to be on the same page. God knows, we're not going to agree on everything, and I don't think we should either. But we need to work on communication. My hope is, whatever this vote is here, that we will have a committee item also voted on tonight that will put maybe BSNA specifically, or the item of communication, or even the item of fees going forward into committee of the whole, so we can have these frank discussions as a group. And we're going back and forth here a lot, and, you know, sometimes we all love each other, and sometimes we all hate each other. We're all colleagues, and we all have good points, and we all have good traits and qualities and characteristics that make us a good council, and allow us to serve you as a community better. But the communication issue is, is bringing that down in general. So, Ms. Toy?
If you're done.
This item is yours from now on.
Was there anyone else from the council wishing to address this topic? And you went to the audience, right?
I did not get a chance to.
Oh, pardon me, okay. Now is the time, if anyone would like to make comment on this, if you're totally confused, okay. Um, seeing and hearing no one, then if no one else from council, would the clerk please take the vote on the veto?
Okay, just to clarify for everybody here, this vote is to override the veto, that's all this vote is. Okay, so we don't have any confusion. The city attorney asked me to make sure that I made that clear, so we know we're doing. Okay, so, council member Barr.
Sorry, I thought you were going to Toy first. Aye. Well, because she's the... Yeah, I got you. Aye.
Council member Donavick.
Aye.
Council member Morgan.
Aye.
Council member McCullough.
No.
Council member McIntyre.
Aye.
President Jolly.
No.
Vice President Toy.
No. The veto stands. I'm now handing the gavel back to the president.
Mr. President.
Mr. Donavick.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to place a motion in the committee of the whole, for the city council to study user fees in the city of Livonia.
Support.
Madam President, uh, Mr. President?
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. President. So as you all see, there, see there was a long discussion about user fees, and some of those user fees can have large impacts to our city. Some of them may be $3 per click, some of them may be a fee at the engineering department, at the law department, at the treasurer's department, the list goes on to the fees that can be associated in our city. Most of those, I would tend to agree that they're needed. These are things that have to happen, these are, these are charges that have to, to be charged to residents and residents alike. However, I'd like to understand, with the law department's help and the administration's help, where council falls into that? Where does council decide, when does council decide, when a user fee is allowed to be charged to a resident or non-resident? Because at the end of the day, the council is the one that dictates our budget, we're the ones that vote on that budget. Now, department heads, I know there's been a lot of talk about micromanaging, our department heads work very hard in our community. They come up with creative ideas, some that council may, and administration may not agree with, some that they do. So we need to partner with our department heads, they are the people that work in the city hall every single day, but the council members are the ones that are accountable to our residents, to the voters. We are the ones that speak to residents every single day. So trying to better understand as a council, where we come into play on user fees, I think is very important. What user fees, do user fees, does every single user fee in the city of Livonia have to come before council for a vote? Or do they not? And I don't understand council's roles, and I don't think anybody in the city right now really truly understands where council legally falls for every single user fee in the city. And I think it's important that council better understands our role in that process, and if we have to, as a council, vote on every single user fee in our city? Or are we just gonna vote on user fees that are connected to contracts that this council votes on? Thank you, Mr. President.
If there's nothing else from the council in regards to that referral to committee of the whole, is there anybody from the audience? I see none. Ms. Nash, please take the vote.
Vice President Toy.
Aye.
Council member Barr.
Aye.
Council member Donavick.
Aye.
Council member Morgan.
Aye.
Council member McCullough.
Aye.
Council member McIntyre.
Aye.
President Jolly.
Aye. The matter passes, this is referred to the committee of the whole. With that being said, we have some, uh, people we need to honor tonight, in regards to their continued efforts here in the city of Livonia. I would like to welcome up recipients of the small business grants to the podium with the appropriate introductions. Ms. Mayor, are you gonna be doing that? Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, and good evening, council. We are excited tonight here, as part of our Livonia Pure Potential Program, which you've heard us talk about for over a year now, to finally see some of the manifestations of an awful lot of hard work by our various departments. This has been a really great example of a combination of the work that's come out of our housing commission, as well as our economic development office, in pulling together some of the CDBG funds that have been available for us to strengthen small businesses in our community. As part of the Pure Potential Program, there is a network, an interface, that helps businesses connect with entrepreneurs, to help them connect with job seekers, whether they're in apprenticeships, or journeyman programs, or internships. This part of our program, though, is a way where we were able to directly supply small business owners with the money necessary to bolster their businesses in a tough economy, in a tough hiring market. So, I had a chance to welcome all five of these small business owners at one of their very early meetings. This is the first cohort to be provided with grant funding for their businesses, but in addition to grant funding, what's so exceptional about this program, is that there's a business training component that goes along with it. So we're not thinking that we can solve business problems and strengthen businesses alone, simply by throwing money at, at, at an organization. It's important to make sure that they have additional resources, in order to build and grow their businesses in the city of Livonia. So our businesses this evening are gonna be recognized for going through this cohort of, being part of the cohort that's gone through the training, and I am especially excited, because you may notice, they are all females. And female business owners are real powerhouses, and I think you will find that to be the case with all five of the women that are going to be recognized here this evening. So, on behalf of the city of Livonia, we want to congratulate you for going through the program, for making great strides with your businesses. We are excited that your businesses are growing here in our city. It is amazingly important to us that Livonia be the hub for small business growth and development. I do want to congratulate Jacob Uhazi and Madison Birtness, two of the people that have been really instrumental in making sure that this program not only got off the ground, but that there were amazingly talented people brought in to help in that educational component. So, and council, thank you all for your support in making sure we were able to advance this program as well. It is really one of our best community efforts. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Can you tell me, tell us your name and your position?
Yep, so, I'm Jacob Uhazi, I'm the Planning Economic Development Coordinator, and...
I'm Madison Birtness, I'm our CDBG Division Director.
Thank you.
Um, yeah, so as the mayor said, we were able to put together this program with the help of you all, it was very successful, and the help of one of our partners, Proxy, is the one that provided the business training. They were incredible, they made great strides in helping these businesses, we've heard all great feedback, so thank you first for being a part of us and helping our community. I know some of these businesses are gonna have to get back to their, right, day job, or night, you know, after hours, so I'm gonna make it quick, but wanna start by honoring Tiana Anthony, she owns Linen and Company, they are an event space and rental, rental company for venues, parties, and such. I'm gonna give her, do you want to say anything? It's up to you. Yeah, she's been a great person to work with, and incredible companion, or person to have in the community, and a great business owner, so we really thank you for being part of this.
Hi, everyone, I'm Tiana Anthony, I have a table for 20, which you guys, I have seen like riding by, it's next to the dog, it's Wags, Dog Paller, I know you guys probably know where that's at. I just wanted to say thank you for voting and having this Pure Potential Program for us, to allow us to get grants to further our business, it was much needed and much appreciated. And thanks to everyone.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yep.
Next, we want to bring up Maika Barnett, she's the owner of Marketplace 519, it is a, I guess, how would you best describe your...
Furniture, home decor, and staging.
Furniture, home decor, and staging, her, her storefront looks beautiful now, thanks to the grant, you should check it out. Again, thank you for all your work, thank you for being a part of this community, we're glad you chose here. Would you like to say anything?
I'd just like to say, thank you guys so much for this opportunity, it has definitely helped my business, and if anybody's looking for furniture, home decor, staging, I'm on Middle Belt.
What's your address?
It's 1-8770 Middle Belt Road.
Thank you, ma'am.
We'd also like to congratulate Fatima Fields of In-N-Out Tax Services, as a tax accounting service. Again, great job, thank you so much for being a part of this, we're really glad you got around and applied and were approved, and...
Hi, I wanted, first of all, I wanted, well, my name is Fatima Fields from In-N-Out, as he stated. I want to thank you guys humbly for voting for this opportunity for us in this community. I've been in Livonia for over 20 years, and when Mr. Jacob walked into my office, I'll be totally transparent, I thought it was a joke. I was like, what do I have to do, this is a gimmick, you guys are not doing this, because again, I've been in Livonia, my office has been in Livonia for 20 years, so I was really excited to see Livonia council vote on something to pour back into a small business owners that we can help us grow, because I am hiring, and that really helped me in this industry. So if anyone needs a tax professional, I am located at 275307 Monroe Row, Inkster, Michigan, have 30 years of experience, so come check me out.
And there were two participants that are unable to be here tonight, we still want to recognize them, because they are an important part of this. First is Gwen Williams with Naturalicious, they are a hair care beauty product, they actually manufacture the site, their beauty products in the city of Livonia. She actually owns two businesses in the city of Livonia, as well as the Good Hair Bar, so you've probably seen that off of Seven Mile. And it's, it's great to see her actually manufacturing, and they are featured on many like nationwide websites and brands and storefronts, so it's really exciting to see that locally grown. The other one we want to recognize is Dahlia Elswood, Els Road, Suite 220 off Plymouth Road, they are a bakery with some amazing cupcakes, highly suggest, check them out. And they were all great participants. Yeah, we just want to say thank you again for helping us put this together. We, like I said, they were all great, it was a great cohort, and very successful, we had such positive things to say about both our business contractor and the city, and just really watching them grow, so, thank you.
Thank you all for your efforts. Ms. Toy?
If I may, I just want to personally congratulate all of you. I'm a small business owner, 40 some years in this community, this community is awesome. They've given so much, and we've given back too, so don't be scared to give back to the community as you grow, because you will grow in Livonia. It's an excellent community to do business in, as long as you don't get in trouble with inspection, you're fine. But in all seriousness, I want to commend you, especially as women, it's tough to be a woman, it's tough to pay 16 different small business taxes, everyone, that we all pay, but God bless you, and I hope you have much, much success.
Mr. Donavick, I think he wants some people to clap for him as well.
Yes, yes. Everybody wants to get a... Thanks, Mr. President. Mr. Uhazi, and Ms. Birtness, Birtness?
Birtness.
Birtness, thank you for the hard work that you both do in your respective departments, thank you to the council, and thank you to the mayor for coming up with the Pure Potential Program and putting this together, I appreciate the mayor on this, I appreciate this council. Sometime ago, the council had money from a federal grant, not local tax dollars, but from a federal grant that we needed to spend. Long story short, this department, Mr. Uhazi and Ms. Birtness, were able to put that money to work and help our small business owners. As Councilwoman Toy said, small businesses are not easy to operate in today's world, especially when the governor and the government is shutting you down, and making it much more difficult for you to operate. Every single opportunity that we can partner with our small business owners here in the local government aspect, we are gonna do that with you. So thank you to coming, thank you to coming to Livonia, thank you to the Department of Administration and Council for putting this program together, and I look forward to the city council partnering with small businesses in the future, to make sure that you come here and you stay here for many, many years. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you all very much, congratulations, thank you on the...
Thank you so much.
On behalf of the city, doing this great work. I'm gonna, at this point, announce a report from the administration, a communication from the Department of Finance dated July 2nd, 2023, forwarding the departmental purchase report for the month ending June 30, 2023. With that being said, believe it or not, we haven't actually gone to council yet to make any council announcements. I'll note that we have new information, new data that is, on item 10B, and is there anything pertinent that my colleagues need to say? Mr. McCullough?
So something happier note, no, that, congratulations again to everybody. One thing I want to give a huge kudos to is our Livonia Parks and Rec. We had Shakespeare in the park over the weekend, it was a resounding success, seen and heard great things about it, and so everybody that was involved, I want to give you a big shout out, I'm hoping for many more years that we continue this. It just, just a great collaboration with everybody involved. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCullough. I have nothing, and I don't think my colleagues have anything else.
I do.
Ms. McIntyre?
I only have two kids, so I do this a lot less often than some of my other colleagues, but wishing our youngest son, Patrick Cullin, a very, very happy birthday, 20th birthday tomorrow, he's joy most of the time, and also very proud that, since he was a junior in high school, has worked for Livonia Parks and Rec as a lifeguard, and happy birthday, and we're really looking forward to celebrating his birthday with him tomorrow night. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. I have to apologize here, have we not done audience communication yet? We did do it.
Yeah, we did. Consent.
I was just waiting for the consent agenda.
Oh, for the first side, okay. It's been a little...
It's all right, it's been a long evening.
All right, so for the regularly scheduled event tonight, we're gonna start with the consent agenda tonight, that's items one through nine, these items were previously, previously studied on July 10th of 2023, found to require no additional study, and will be voted on tonight as a single item.
So moved.
Support. I have a motion to approve from Toy, support from Barr, is there any audience comment on the consent agenda? Mr. Martin?
Here we go, Christopher Martin, the great state of Michigan. This is in reference to number six, this is the approved advanced salary for the incoming library director. Things are put on the consent agenda when they're deemed to be not controversial. I believe this is because in the real world, it's like a 90-day evaluation, or six months after you hire somebody, and then you see if they can actually do the job, see if they're worthwhile keeping. So, I'm somewhat against giving more money for a position, when we really haven't had a clear understanding if that person could actually do it. So, if I was sitting up there, I would not have been in favor of this whatsoever, because this is not, and it's, I'm just focusing specifically on this, not anything that the past director did over there, just on this, I would not give a raise to somebody until I could see that they could do the job. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anything else in regards to comments on the consent agenda? Seeing none, Ms. Nash, please take the vote on that.
Vice President Toy?
Aye.
Council member Barr?
Aye.
Council member Donavick?
Aye.
Council member Morgan?
Aye.
Council member McCullough?
Aye.
Council member McIntyre?
Aye.
President Jolly?
Aye, the consent agenda, items one through nine tonight have passed. Our next item is item 10, that's Unfinished Business, it is a report out of the Capitol Outlet and Infrastructure Committee meeting that took place on July 17th of 2023, that's chaired by Mr. McCullough, I'll go to him for the report.
Thank you, Council President. Yeah, this took place, it was Capitol Alley and Infrastructure Committee, we had two items on the agenda, committee members that were present were myself and Kathleen, Council Member McIntyre. Other council members present was Councilman Donavick, Councilman Morgan, and we had two items, the first being the Bell Creek Court erosion. This is actually in reference to a grant that was obtained through the state, and we have a resident there that is, has been having extreme erosion due to the creek for probably the past 30 years. And so there was grant funding, this was more taking a deeper dive, that item will remain in committee, we'll leave it there for now. The resolution basically is, is the fix was going to be...
The resolution basically is, is the fix was going to be a lot more than the money that we had funding for and plus the resident did not sign an easement in enough time. So we're hoping that we can get some designs and maybe in the future, if we have some funding, we can deal with it there. The second item, we have, we've, is the Plant Moran Cressa Needs Assessment that we had done. We had it done on roughly eight buildings that equated to about ninety-five million dollars worth of deficiencies throughout the, some of the facilities in the city. And so as a city, as a collective whole, we're looking at Livonia Vision 21, our master plan, and seeing where to go and we're taking the necessary steps. It was a great meeting. Plant Moran Cressa and Mr. Rushlow kind of led the team on that and gave us a quick presentation. And basically the next step is to, which is phase two, is to take a deeper dive on exactly what our needs are for a lot of these facilities and come up basically with a square footage and a cost estimate and then go forward. These are taking items that are, have been an issue, the ninety-five million dollars, like we said, and developing a game plan. Obviously, that's an issue and we're hoping that, you know, we've got a good crew that takes us through. And I know Councilman Donovan did have a motion. Would you like the report out on that?
Mr. President?
Typically, we don't go to secondary report outs. You would list the motion and.
So the motion by Mr. Donovan was to. Was to approve phase two for a total amount of a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. And that would take us through the next phase.
Mr. President?
Mr. Donovan?
Should I support that?
I, Mr. McCullough, is it your intention to offer that motion?
That is.
Mr. President?
Mr. Donovan?
Thanks to Plant Moran Cressa for the detailed information that your company has offered and thanks to Mr. Rushlow. He basically analyzes with Plant Moran Cressa all of our buildings. Now, there's some hundred buildings in the city of Livonia. Granted, some of those buildings are small bathrooms and whatnot, but a lot of those buildings are large facilities like you see here today. One of which does not have functioning air conditioning right now. So with that being said, there's some ninety-plus million dollars in repairs over a course of time that needs to be done on a lot of our buildings in the city. And city council, with partnership of the department head and administration, had essentially added four more structures or multiple more structures, the fire departments there, as a lot of these fire departments are aging. And so are the other structures that we analyze. Now again, we've only analyzed nine to thirteen, fourteen of these structures. Imagine all those other buildings I've kind of mentioned briefly that we have to invest money in. So I think it's very important that this council takes a very deep dive in the future of our buildings, these assets like any private company would. And these are taxpayer dollars that we are spending on our buildings. So Plant Moran Cressa will be going to the second phase to analyze these buildings more in depth. And I think it's important that we pass that to make sure that happens. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Barr?
So full transparency, I should have been in that meeting and there was a slip up and it wasn't on my calendar and so I didn't find out about it until it was too late to be there and that's, that's ultimately on me. So I'm going to ask a couple of questions that had I been there, I would have known. So through the chair to Mr. McCullough, if I may. Or anybody if they want to weigh into it. The, Mr. Donovan just said four buildings, I believe. Is, is the intention, as far as what came out from that meeting, and if Mr. McCullough wants to respond to this, I'd love to yield the floor to him to do that. Is the thinking that the first batch that we did in phase one are the higher priority buildings? And that this is something that's further down the line after we would address those buildings? Or is this something that's seen as needed as a, an overall look to determine which buildings are most appropriate? Do you understand what my question is?
Chair, Mr. Chair?
You have the floor.
Thank you. Yes, Councilmember Barr, so this would not be adding any, well, they kind of run concurrent, but this still kind of touches base. Overall, in the last meeting when we were talking about the buildings that would be affected in the master plan and the Vision 21, mainly for this campus. So you've got the library still. I know that's Police Station, Fire Station One and, and City Hall. And so basically, this is now taking more of that deeper dive like we spoke about in that first meeting to start really doing the needs assessment, space planning. A lot of fun for all the administration to really get down in the weeds and figure out what their needs are and then even project. So hopefully, out of this next phase, we would have some kind of, almost a square footage and then mix that with the current cost and hopefully they keep dropping for the square footage cost for new construction.
Mr. Chair, if I may, one more additional question and I know this is going through to each other, but I think this is productive, so. And now I forgot what it was. I'll let it go. Thanks. Oh, I do remember what it was. Thank you. I knew that would happen. And Mr. McCullough, or anybody else that was present there, and I just, I didn't think of these when I was doing my prep for this meeting until now. Do we have an idea as to how many phases we'll be looking at? I mean, we've done phase one and phase two now. Do we have a, was that question asked in that meeting as far as how many phases there's ultimately going to be?
You know what? That is a great question. I know we have a representative from Plant Moran, if you guys, if I may, to have that addressed. I know that they're, just speaking, there would probably be, after that, would be phase three, would I would almost consider be some kind of direction. There might not, actually, there might not be.
Okay, so I see the representatives from Plant Moran Cressa coming up here. I'm going to go to them. I'm going to indicate this is not a committee meeting. Mr. Fountain?
Sure.
If you can answer the questions directly, I'd appreciate it. The floor is yours in regards to the questions.
Certainly. Thank you, council. To answer the question regarding the number of phases that will largely depend on the outcome of, of the phase two study and ultimately the direction that we receive from mayor's office in conjunction with you council members.
Is this question for Mr. Fountain?
No, it's not for Mr. Fountain. It's just to clarify something that the question was asked.
I have a question for you.
Do you have a question for him?
Yeah.
Okay, let's take the questions to Mr. Fountain real quick. Go ahead.
So this, I think the first phase was nine buildings. My understanding is this phase adds four?
If I could clarify, offer some clarification?
Yeah, please.
So the amendment before you for our, for our contract, it will include the evaluation of the fire stations before mentioned. It also includes the space and site program scope of work for the City Hall Police and Fire located on this campus. So just to be abundantly clear, we're talking about three buildings for the phase two, phase two work. And then there's an extension of phase one services related to the three other fire station locate, or four other fire station locations in the city. So seven total.
Got it. So we have, I think the number's a hundred and twenty-eight. I forget exactly what it is, but buildings in the city, it's a hundred and something. In the lower half of the hundreds. Either you or I don't know if Mr. Rushlow knows, I mean, is the intention that ultimately, that this type of study would apply to all of those buildings? Or I see Mr. Rushlow shaking his head. It just provides some insight on that.
Yeah, thank you. Jacob Rushwell, Assistant Director of Public Works. So no, not necessarily this level of detail on all of our other ancillary structures throughout the city. I mean, a lot of those structures, like Councilman Donovan had alluded to, they're smaller storage buildings and sheds that may house equipment at a park where we use for maintenance with mowing or something like that. So the assessment of the condition of those buildings is a much simpler process than City Hall or the police station where there's, you know, multiple staff and adjacencies of different departments working together and trying to figure out, you know, space planning and needs assessments of those facilities, not just operationally, but also just the structure itself and the condition of the structure.
Thanks. That's all my questions. And Mr. Chair, I apologize for taking a few minutes here. Again, that's my, my mishap for, for not being aware of that meeting, but I got the information I need for tonight. Thank you.
There's no place I'd rather be with all of you. Mr. McCullough, does that conclude your report?
It does.
Thank you very much. I believe we have the motion on the floor, correct? With all the interruptions here, did we go to the audience in regards to that motion? I don't believe we did. Is there anybody from the audience who'd like to comment on that? I see none. Ms. Nash, please take the vote.
Vice President Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember Donovan?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
President Jolly?
Aye. The matter passes. Thank you very much. New business tonight starts with item 11. That's a block party from Cindy Roberts to be held on Saturday, July 29th of 2023, from 12:00 PM to 10:00 PM on Roycroft Street between Woodring and Loveland Streets. Can I have a motion from the council?
President, I'd like to offer an approving support.
I'm going to give it to Toy for the support. Mr. Donovan, motion, support for Toy. We're starting with a motion because we have to, because of these Roberts Rules of Order. He gets mad when we do things the wrong way. Can you tell us what your event is?
It's on this birthday party for my neighbor.
Okay. Are you going to allow Colin Burkle to be there?
Colin's coming home for the party.
Okay. Well, that may, that may make me consider my vote.
No, he's not.
He operates my favorite Instagram account, Biking with Colin. We have a motion on the floor. If there's nothing else from council, if there's no audience objections, Ms. Nash, can you take the vote?
Vice President Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember Donovan?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
President Jolly?
Aye. You're all set. Enjoy the party.
Thank you.
Item 12 is a request to waive the city's noise ordinance from Lisa Wassiel to host a graduation party on Saturday, July 29th, 3:00 PM to 1:00 AM on a property located at 29946 West Chicago Road. Can I have a motion from the council?
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Toy, support by Barr. Good evening, ma'am. Can you tell me what your, well, what your plan is and what school the party is celebrating graduation from?
It's my daughter's graduation party and I have quite a few people coming. I've lived in my home for thirty-three years. I have never thrown a big party like this, so I just want to cover up my bases and do the right things.
What school is your daughter graduating from?
Franklin. Actually, she graduated in January.
Go Patriots.
We got McCullough's vote.
But she walked with her class in June.
Okay. Go Patriots, right?
Go Chargers.
Hey, I graduated from Churchill.
I'm just going to point this out real quick here. It's a little abnormal for us to approve, to waive the city's noise ordinance all the way to 1:00 AM. Is there a way that you can knock that down?
12:45? No, just.
It's just, particularly in a residential neighborhood, that's not something we normally go that late for.
Yeah, I have, the majority of my neighbors are coming. So whatever you say, I'll go by.
Ms. Toy?
I'll, I'll make it midnight and then that way you can clean up and do things you need to do.
I appreciate it.
Any other comments from the council, Mr. Barr?
Just as a matter of making sure, I think you probably just addressed it. You said majority of your neighbors are coming. I assume you've informed all your neighbors? Okay.
But there's always that one.
It's one night.
If there's nothing else from the council?
They've been invited.
Is there any objection or comment from the audience on item 12? I see none. Ms. Nash, take the vote, please.
Vice President Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember Donovan?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
President Jolly?
Aye. You're approved.
So happy to cry. Thank you.
Have fun.
Thank you so much. Is there anything I need to do?
You get to leave. I hope to follow you at some point. Item 13 is a request, is a request to waive the city's noise ordinance from Jacob Ermet to host a concert event Friday, August 5th, 3:00 PM to 11:00 PM with live music and DJs on the property of 9820 Levan Road. Can I have a motion from the council?
So moved.
Support.
Motion by McIntyre, support by McCullough. Good evening. Tell us what this is all about.
Good evening, City Council. My name's Jacob, representing 9820 Levan Road. It's a concert celebrating my friend's music. We got seven bands playing from technically four to nine-thirty, but want to give some buffer room, so saying like three to eleven.
Your friend's not Taylor Swift, is it?
No.
We can start that rumor and have a big crowd go there, right?
It's open to the public. Yeah, if y'all want to come.
You know when they say like, listen, when everything's going to your favor, you should. How big is the property at 9820 Levan Road?
It's, it's pretty big. I don't have an exact measurements. It borders Heinz Drive. It's at the very end of a dirt road on Levan Road. It's like passes no outlet sign. It's, the front yard, I would say is like sixty by sixty feet, something like that. It's fairly isolated. It faces Heinz Drive and then behind it, I think, is the.
Probably about a thousand square feet, front yard.
Yeah.
If not bigger.
Mr. Barr?
So we can, you know, we can take it all on. Bring the whole city.
That's not, that's not helping your case. So I'm looking at your property on Google Earth here and I can see, I, I see what you're talking, you guys. Appears from satellite view, you have a beautiful piece of property that can probably handle a larger group of people. Can see why you're wanting to do this. Have you spoken to the neighbors behind your property?
Not yet. Not behind, but beside. Yes, my neighbors.
Do we have another meeting before August? You need this tonight, don't you? So here's the thing, you're talking about open to the public. You're talking about a number of bands and you haven't spoken to your neighbors yet. There's a lot of cause for concern here from a city residential standpoint. And we, we, we approve these noise ordinances routinely. This is a unique one.
Okay.
And I, I guess, had you said you're talking to your neighbors behind you to tell it's coming, it would probably, I'd be, I'd just cross my fingers and say, okay, let's. Let me ask this. How, how have you gone about marketing this?
Really, it's to friends and family.
So it's private invitation?
It's private invitation.
So when you say open to the public, you've invited some people to come.
Oh, shoot.
Yeah.
But, but you're just saying anybody's welcome to come, but it's not like you're brought, you're advertising this.
Someone walks down the street and hears it and they want to come, they're welcome.
How many people do you anticipate having?
Typically, like something like this would be like twenty to thirty at a time.
So you anticipate different crowds coming in for different bands?
That's happened because like when I talk to friends, they're like, oh, I can come from this time, this time, or someone says I can.
So, so what were the times you said you're actually going to be doing this?
From four to nine-thirty, but I was seeing they get away from three to eleven.
Who made the motion? I'm just gonna, this, could this, could this be approved at our next meeting in time for them? To give them time to talk to the neighbors? When's our next meeting?
I don't know that we have a meeting before then.
That's what I'm just checking here. If you can bear with me real quick. Go ahead.
Well, Mr. Barr is checking on that. Let me ask a couple of questions.
Sure thing.
You're right, we don't.
And this is just because of the nature. Normally, who would not ask these questions? Are you charging a fee at all for people to attend this?
Not at all.
Okay, are there going to be any common sources of alcohol at this?
No.
Like, this isn't like an open.
No, there are, we are not going to be serving alcohol here.
Okay. Mr. Barr?
I might suggest it's a, I, I, we don't have a meeting before next time, so you've got to get this approval tonight. I have concerns. I would feel a lot better if you had talked to your neighbors.
Absolutely.
I'm willing to cross my fingers on this one and support it. However, I'm wondering if the maker of the motion would consider, short, they're saying three to eleven and shorten it to maybe four to ten. They've said that's really all they need anyway and just to be a little more conservative with this.
Ms. McIntyre?
I have, as the maker of the, the maker of the motion, I have no problem with that. And I had offered the motion so we could have some discussion on this. I, I would like to add, it's always encouraging and great when musicians want to perform and, and also, I'll say this, appreciate that you came to us to get this, to get this because we know there are a lot of musicians, a lot of parties where people skip this step. And so the last thing that, that I want is for you to feel like we should have just skipped coming here because we really do appreciate the fact that you're here. And if ten, so I guess I'd be open to moving the, or mending the motion if, if we know that that's going to work.
From four to ten, you said? Yeah, that works. Thank you.
I think the, the moral of the story is this is about respect. We're, we're expecting you to be respectful. And I, we have no reason to think that you wouldn't be. It's just, you know, there's some red flags that.
Sure.
Let's make sure we don't violate those, okay? Mr. Donovan?
Thanks, Mr. President. Yeah, this is a fun idea. I just think, I hope you guys understand from a council perspective, we don't want to happen as it gets out of control when the police department starts getting called in and it becomes some sort of large, you know, party and it gets out of control. So, because we don't want you guys to get shut down. We oftentimes approve block party requests and whatnot and we want everyone to have a good time. I hope that more residents kind of have these kind of engagements and share fond memories with their, with their neighbors and whatnot. But the last thing we want to see is that the police department comes down and shuts you guys down because this gets out of control. So thanks for coming to council. It's the right thing to do. This council will remember if you guys come back next year. I hope you have a successful year. And you come back before it's next year asking for it again. I just think it's really important. And next year, when you guys come back after your successful event this year with no issues, that you talk to your neighbors first and get it all cleared up so we make an informed decision. So good luck. Have fun this year.
I appreciate that.
Not too much fun, though. Just a little bit, just a little bit.
Spoken by somebody in her former life known to spin some records himself. Is there any audience objection to this? Is there any audience objection to this matter? Any comment?
Not objection, just a comment.
No, if you want to talk to us, you got to come up here.
Sorry, so sorry.
Tell me your name.
I'm Jasmine.
Jasmine what?
Jasmine Rose.
Okay.
I'm his wife. I noticed on here it says Friday, August 5th, it is a Saturday.
Okay.
I guess that's going to clear it.
Well, that changes everything.
I'm just saying, I'm just saying. That was all.
Good catch, thank you very much. If there's nothing else, Ms. Nash, take the vote.
Vice President Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Barr?
Only because it's Saturday.
Aye.
Councilmember Donovan?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
President Jolly?
Aye. Take care.
Thank you, council. Have a good night.
Thank you. You too.
Thank you.
Item number 14 is a proposed acquisition of a tax-foreclosed property coming to us from the Livonia Housing Commission to acquire the property at 11745 Ingsher for a total of $13,476.19, including estimated closing costs through the Community Development Block Grant Program. Speaking of people who got to leave and came back...
Yes, I know.
Tell us your name and your position, sir.
Jim Ingalls, interim director of the Housing Commission.
Okay, thank you. Can I have a motion on this matter?
So moved.
Support.